This meeting will be recorded.
Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the special meeting of council. I'd like to call the meeting to order at 12 P M. Adoption of the agenda resolved that council adopt the agenda as amended with the addition of the following items. Item three point seven mitigation and preparedness program. Can I have a mover, please? Move by counselor Paul, second by counselor Hunt. Any other additions or deletions? A D J, I just said, item, the gravel tender, item three point five. Are we deferring that?
Yes, yes, we'll defer that one. We need to do a little more analysis.
Okay, any further additions? Madam Mayor.
Thank you. That was what I was going to request about the gravel. I would just like to make a comment, council. This is a special meeting. I fully understand. Um, but this is basically turned into a regular council meeting. And that being included in our indemny, so I would request consideration. There'd be no charges for today's meeting. Thank you.
Okay, any further additions, deletions, hearing and seeing not all in favor? That is Gary. Thank you very much. Okay. We are moving on to item three point one, delegation in the exchange group review of the solid waste services. And Colin is here from the exchange group as well as a few others. So Colin, if you'd like to introduce yourself and and go through your presentation.
Sure, sounds good. Hi, I'm Colin LaPlante. I'm with Exchange Group. I'm a consultant on the team. And you know, we did various work with this project here through the municipal service delivery improvement program. And I also have Michael Stevens here if he wants to introduce himself quickly.
Thanks, Colin. Yeah, I'm Mike Stevens. I'm the managing partner of Exchange Group and partner in charge of the this project. And Colin worked diligently on this, and so I'm actually going to let him do the presentation. And and I will join in as needed. Thank you.
Sounds good. Now with that in mind, I'll get started and I'll start sharing my screen. If someone could allow me to share my screen, it says I'm disabled at the moment. Sure. You're ready to go. Okay, can everybody see this? The PowerPoint?
Yes.
Yes, we can see it.
Okay, so now I'll get started here. So this is the an overview summary of our project that was done with the municipal service delivery improvement program. And it was best practices for solid waste management plans, a review of the program. So project overview, it was to review the solid waste services. And as part of this project, we selected ten municipalities for cross comparison.
Well, we're still on the first page.
Oh, you are?
Yeah, though you may, I think what's happened is you're probably displaying it on your second screen. So I think you'll just have to page down on this screen.
Let me try this again. Apologize, guys. Where is the?
As I like to say, too much technology.
Yep. Here we go. Okay, let's try this again. Share my screen, entire screen here. Let's try this.
No. There we go.
Okay, can you see the second slide?
Yes.
Yes. Perfect. Thanks, Mike. Okay, so continuing on here. So we were, we looked at cross comparable municipalities that were selected to to analyze here. And we looked at things such as landfill information, waste, recycling, what kind of curbside services were offered and the cost per municipality. And in addition to that, we looked at ten years of financial information of the R M as well as some best practices that were determined. And then we've come up with some recommendations based on those best practices with some plans to implement next. So how we gathered our information came from information supplied to us, information that was publicly available. We conducted some interviews and we did some site tours to get some good examples as well. Some of the goals that are for St. Andrews that was determined as part of this was to reduce greenhouse gases, to try and reduce the number of visitors to the landfill while trying to extend the useful life of the existing landfill cells, increase diversion through recycling and composting while trying to implement some alternative diversion options and some of the best practices outlined here. Some of the challenges that are faced is right now there's too many visitors at the landfill. There's a low diversion rate in the in the municipality and some of that has to do with the lack of easy ways to recycle. There's barriers to try and implementing composting, limited internal tracking of public works activities by by landfill activity. And then there's limited data tracking and materials. And so we're referring to here is sort of manual input of of tracking into spreadsheets instead of real time data that you can analyze and sort of make decisions off of. The tipping fees collected do not fully offset the operating costs of the landfill. And the municipality doesn't have a weight scale, which makes it difficult to price based on on actual weight and also what's going necessarily was going in the landfill as well. And then unable to quantify greenhouse gases. Some of the key findings throughout this project is one, there's a lower cycling rate overall. There's an industry trend leading to closing landfills and operating transfer stations as well as organic diversion. And so what I mean by closing landfills is typically the regions outside of like the city that may not have the resources to manage the waste. And out of the ten municipalities selected, only the arm of St. Andrews was the one that didn't have a curbside program. The roll off bins that are currently in place are expensive. The landfills is experiencing an average annual deficit of four hundred eighty seven thousand over our ten year analysis. As well as recycling highlighted in green is showing an average annual deficit of thirty seven hundred. We're showing that rebates are assisting and as well as the increased efforts of recycling is is starting to create a little bit of a net positive. The RARS levy might be overpaid due to some of the past waste audits that that indicate and as well as the reporting method, which we'll cover a bit later. Here's an early side of the recommendations we've come across, which involve establishing a curbside waste and recycling program for cell St. Andrews, implementing a tracking system, developing a mulching program for the community as well as implementing composting. And based on the results of those previous recommendations, look to close those landfills in the long term based on some of those previous recommendations and operate transfer stations. Now, as part of the project, we looked at some of those curbside services and the common practices. We looked at things such as service coverage, material type, service information such as type of pickup, how frequently they're collected, what type of waste bin they're using and how these services are funded. The most common one we we see is that the cluster regions are serviced and you know, this represents the areas that are densely populated. There isn't much distance between homes and waste and recycling providers like to price, you know, cheaper or a little bit better based on the regions that are closer together, which is why you see the rural regions that are being included. And and the cost of servicing those regions might be expensive. We see about six out of the out of the ten comparable locations are using special service levies to fund these type of services, which you know, only the people wanting to pay for it are are paying for it in that case. And then organics, which is not commonly offered, and this is partly because it's expensive and it seems to be a bit of a newer service that's that's trying to be offered. Looking at the cost per resident, so on this scale here, Hanover, LaBrokery, and Portage, they're all relatively low cost. And this is because they're only operating transfer stations. They have close, close landfills that are in close proximity to them. And for example, the city of Portage has the earth, sorry, Arm of Portage has the city of Portage landfill nearby. Hanover and LaBrokery have the city of Steinback nearby. So they have a low cost because they're not operating a landfill in this case. St. Clement's and Reachout, they're offering class one landfills, which they're servicing larger amounts of waste and allowing waste from outside of those regions. So the cost's a little bit higher, specifically St. Clement's. They also have four transfer stations, so that would increase the cost. The Army McDonald, most of their waste is going to the Brady landfill. And this is because most of the residents hire private contractors. And and with most of the waste going to Brady, this would mean that the landfill doesn't have as much operating costs. Looking at St. Andrews, it does appear to be lower on the scale. But one of the issues we looked at as part of our analysis is the public works data tracking, which doesn't have an accurate representation of the hours and the cost going into it, isn't reflected on here necessarily. So this cost might actually be a bit more closer to the average. Then we looked at landfill and recycling. So looking at recycling first, there's an average deficit of thirty seven hundred dollars. And looking more specifically twenty twenty and twenty twenty one saw a surplus of about thirty thousand dollars. We see how the MSM rebate and the RARS rebate is reducing those overall costs. So those programs are helping. And the largest cost of the recycling program is collecting those roll off bins that are placed around municipality. So if we look at this scale here, right, we see that the the recycling revenues over time, we're starting to get closer and closer to the recycling expenses. And then we're off in twenty twenty and twenty twenty, start to see the revenues exceeding the expenses. So it's been a positive for the efforts in diverting. Looking at the landfill side, those expenses are rising each year. There's an average deficit of four hundred and eighty seven thousand annual deficit. And the largest cost of that activity is public works, which represent about sixty two percent of those activities overall. And and then we note that one of those costs that might be, you know, overpaying is the RARS levy. There's some past waste audits that were done, which indicate the approximate annual amount of waste that is, you know, generated in the municipality. And right now, the method of reporting is based on population. So it's assuming that, you know, the population is sale eleven or twelve thousand, and then everyone is producing the exact same amount of waste. And then it's timesing it by a factor to come up with the levy. Whereas if it was done by weight or another method, which would be a bit more accurate, it would show that that would be a lot lower in price. And to give an example, the average levy right now is about seventy thousand dollars per year. That would mean that there's approximately seventy eight hundred tons of waste. But a class one landfill by definition has a five thousand ton levy. Or anything over five thousand tons of waste collected would meet the definition of class one. So that would mean that there'd have to be a levy of fifty thousand dollars. So we're indicating here is that the levy is probably being overpaid. And in conversation with province and you know how this was generated, this levy formula is about ten years old. And so it's not factoring in the increased efforts of diversion from ten years ago and as it got better and better. And so you know, it's possible that you might want to look into a different reporting method, which might reduce that cost. But lastly, those expenses may be a bit larger than shown, and this is due to accounting practices. So things like machine costs, fuel, repairs and maintenance, stuff that would be more directly applicable to the landfill might be recorded elsewhere in your accounting records, which aren't reflected here and made in fact be larger. Looking at the public work side of things, the public works activities represent about sixty percent of the overall landfill costs in the last ten years. But one of the challenges is that there isn't really efficient tracking of the actual time that's spent doing those landfill activities. And so we note that during our our analysis and review of financials, there's a cost estimate of about three hundred and thirty four thousand, starting from twenty fourteen. That's kind of used every year as an allocation, but it's adjusted for, we adjusted it for inflation for our purposes. And so you can see on the scale here that majority of the cost is public works compared to the overall landfill expenses and it represents a high amount overall. But there are opportunities that exist that we've identified that might reduce that cost. So here's a laundry list of best practices that came about from the from the project. Right? So looking at some of the short term ones would be implementing a curbside collection program using an automated collection system. That would mean that the the truck that's passing by is using a robotic arm and collecting the waste versus the manual way that that may be the older style and still somewhat used, which require labor workers to lift the waste and to put them into the bins. Then composting at the landfill and backyard composting. So we saw that an example, the city of Steinback has a really great composting program that is applicable to a small scale size, you know, equipment and how it's run, etc. Then we look at things like paper bag approach, which would charge everyone who's bringing waste to the site, which then help reduce the cost and make the people who's producing the most waste. Mulching, right, try to get those grass clippings from not coming to the landfill and, you know, reducing that that from ending up there and just having it on their grass instead. And then we saw some municipalities that were recycling shingles and grinding wood. And so then they were, for example, grinding wood, they would give it back to the residents to for their use. And then some of them, a couple municipalities where I think Springfield is an example, where they're using all of their diversion is free and just running it through property taxes. So there's no fee on any of the items. Then improving community education, tracking system. So we've identified a tracking system that would be low cost, you know, would help you get data in real time and create some reports that could be used from it. And then lastly, getting a weight scale, and that would help with the reporting issue with the RARS levy. But we understand that a weight scale isn't necessarily an affordable item. And then in the long term, closing those landfills and operating transfer stations as well as the waste to energy system, which which a study that was done in the in the municipality there, which seemed appears to be a good practice, but we understand it's also costly. Now, what would a curbside program do for the R M? Well, first off, there's a class one landfill that's nearby, which is the Prairie Green landfill. It's only about thirty kilometers from St. Andrews. Now comparing that to a place like LaBrokery, which is about twenty thirty kilometers away from from the the Steinback landfill. You know, it's not too far off comparison. And now you'll see probably a reduced number of visitors. You'll see a reduced volume of waste arriving at the landfill. And those effects may create opportunities to close those landfills in the future. As you see less and less visitors and waste coming in because they're being transported to a different facility, those opportunities might exist. Now, class one landfills have access to weight scales. They have better waste management practices than rural areas. And as well as they can get greenhouse gas reports due to needing to track them. Now, what's a potential outcome for implementing a curbside program at the at the R M here? Well, one, reducing the volume of waste. You'd extend the useful life of those cells because not as much volumes coming in, so they're not getting filled up as fast. There'd be some time saved for some of the staff. More specifically, looking at the public works costs, if we take the annual or sorry, the weekly hour saved and spread that over an annual basis and times it by the approximate machine hour, that could reduce public works costs by about a hundred and forty thousand dollars. Other costs that that are, you know, pretty large that happen as a result of landfill activity is raising the berm. And and those more recent ones were about a hundred and thirteen thousand at Earl Gray and about forty five at Clan Boy. Now, public works right now spends about thirty six hours per week at Clan Boy and Earl Gray, which would involve hauling equipment and changing sites. And and it's quite timely. And so implementing a curbside program might cut that down in half, right? And seeing that the the hours would go from thirty six probably to eighteen, which would free up some time to to do some other projects. And looking at the visitor side, right, so the current visitors is about sixty thousand residential visitors per year as well as about seven thousand private pickup visitors as well. And so with implementing a curbside program and waste going to another facility, that could be cut in half. Right? And you look at maybe residential dropping down to about twenty six, twenty seven thousand as well as residential or a private pickup being dropped down to about three or four hundred. There'd be less use overall. Now, our recommendations are are to recommend the following best practices, and they're subject to the following. One, obtain more accurate information over the next twelve months, right? So our project, you know, there was a lot of issues getting some some of the accurate data. So getting more waste to volume and weight data as well as getting the actual full financial costing of each landfill activity and what's going on in them overall. Then step two would be to tender these services out. Right? This project was started during COVID nineteen, and so that we we acknowledge that there's supply cost challenges. So relying on historical information was was not always necessary when projecting forward. And so then you'll need to do some official R M tendering to tender these services out in order to obtain the appropriate quotes. Then perform some cost benefit analysis on each of those scenarios while considering the environmental impact of those decisions. And so going back to those recommendations, now we're seeing that, you know, establishing a curbside waste or recycling program for cell St. Andrews, which is the more populated area, implementing a tracking system to better track those materials that are coming in. And for example, the the tracking system could track by roll number and you could figure out who's bringing the most materials in and understanding what's coming into the landfill. Adding a mulching program, which is just a simple educational, could be something as simple as adding it to the website just to educate people, try to allow them to produce their grass clippings on the grass and leave and not allowing it to come to the landfill. And then lastly, trying to implement composting. There's a way to, you know, create a site at the landfill for implementing composting where then the end product could be to give back to the residents and and, you know, could be there for their purposes. And then based on the results of these previous recommendations, look to close the landfills in the long term and operate transfer stations. So we're suggesting that by implementing those previous recommendations, you might see less users, might see less volume, which will open the door to then maybe closing these landfills in the long term. And so in our in our report, which has a little more detailed table than this, but this is outlining the next steps for the R M to take, which is essentially a plan of action. So step one would be to engage the community, and this would be either done through, you know, open houses or maybe serving the residents, which you may already be doing. And then evaluating the financial implications of each of these options. And so we've broken them down into revenue options and then cost options. So on the revenue side, right, deciding whether you want to implement a paper bag approach, which would then, you know, come from understanding the data that you get by the visitors from each house and then determining a cost you want to charge them based on that data that you collect. Or allowing nonresidents to come in and dispose at your landfill sites. But the risk of that is that it'll reduce the the existing cell life. Then you could either choose to increase property taxes to fund them or maybe do special service levies, as we've seen some of the other comparable places implementing to help fund them. Apply for grant funding. So we did identify some grants that would be geared towards diversion. And it could be used for things like purchasing additional roll off bins or maybe compost bins. But generally, as long as there are diverted diversion projects, there's definitely some grants out there. And then by reducing levies and increasing rebates, so if you can improve the method at which you report the RARS levy, you could probably reduce that that cost that you're paying. But at the same time, by increasing recycling efforts, you increase the chance of getting a bear rebate back. Then looking at the curbside offering, right, then you'll have to decide what region you'd like to service, what type of service you want to provide. Is it automated or is it manual? Then maybe looking into providing the service for yourself. Would you want to invest in the vehicles to do it and and the bins and the staffing needs to do it? Or looking at the roll off bins you currently have and repurposing their needs, you may not need them anymore. And they could be done either sold or or, you know, done something else with them. Looking at a tracking system, right, understanding the materials that you want to collect, looking at the reports you'd like to generate and then using some of that data to help you as with the levy reporting, which will then help reduce the RARS levy cost. Updating the website to improve the updating quotes to improve the website for a mulching program could involve things like adding signage around the municipality to encourage people to engage in it. And then composting, this one would require a little bit more work, which involved obtaining a permit or license, meeting the requirements of Schedule D of the Environment Act, developing a little region at the landfill for where the compost piles would be, taking the compost courses to understand the, you know, the basic needs and how it needs to be done, which also involve, you know, learning where to get the testing done and then learning how the end product could be could be used. And then lastly, evaluating equipment needs. Now I've identified a loader and a screener here. This is mainly because the city of Steinmax comparable method uses a loader and they rent a screener. And so the equipment needs aren't very large and and is comparable in this sense. And then looking at closing the landfills, right, evaluating the volume and visitors that are coming in based on some of the previous recommendations. And then comparing the cost of operating your landfill as well as hauling it to a class one site as well as hiring an environmental consultant to understand the closure and post closure costs in more detail. And then lastly, operating a transfer station, which are involved deciding between hauling the bins to the class one or paying a provider to do it. Determine the number of bins that would be needed to run a transfer station. And then lastly, looking at the volume of waste from curbside as as an assistance to help make that decision. And that takes us to the end here. Thank you.
Counsel, do you have any questions for Colin? Counselor Paul.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for the presentation as well. I guess one question I would have is, I'm not going to ask what specific cost because it sounds like we need more information first to be able to get into that and from that those details. So that's good. But can you just maybe explain to me the proposal of using another class one landfill? Isn't that just transferring our garbage to somebody else? So it's not really resolving the problem. It's just transferring it to make it somebody else's problem?
Good question. Essentially, yeah, that's kind of what what you're what you're suggesting, what we're suggesting here. But the other added element is that the cost of running those landfills become increasing over time. And so by moving those to the class one landfill, you're one extending the the useful life of the existing cells. But two, also removing that burden over time, because if that cost continues to grow, maybe it becomes too much of an impact on the on the, you know, municipality as a whole. Whereas a place like a class one landfill has the resources to manage those those waste problems in a in a in a better way that would be, you know, better managed than maybe having to try and manage it yourself.
I just note that because I know we've we've been involved in some regional opportunities in the past or regional projects. So maybe there's an opportunity there for some sort of regional project between these other class one sites. So we don't essentially increase their costs, decrease our costs and kind of go, you know, we're done with you. So.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions, Madam Mayor?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Colin Mark. Just an absolutely excellent presentation. Personally, I was unaware how much time our public work spent at the landfills. I know we have to do something to start trying to save the environment. I know. Were you aware there was a tracking system put in place that would have been perhaps Counselor Hunt can expand on that? I believe twenty sixteen fifteen. When I was a counselor, but we had an issue with, it was iPads were supplied to the custodians at the landfills. But cold weather, there was a problem with use to the iPads. There was no internet service. I don't know if there was any data came out of that or not. Okay, there's also, we're part of Winnipeg Metro region. And there was discussion a while back on purchasing a wood chipper. But I believe counselors preaching and Hunter on that board on that waste quadrant. I don't know what the end, there's been a record as to what the outcome or what the status is of that. But all in all, I think this is excellent. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Hunt?
So the tracking system that we did do was just attached a roll number to the garbage that was coming in and we just counted the number of bags. And and, you know, kind of averaged out a weight on it. As far as the wood chipping was done, that's still in discussion as you know, those those machines are five hundred thousand dollars plus. And then the who's going to operate it, you know, a consortium would operate it. You know, it wouldn't go from one R M to another. Who's going to, you know, be accepting for responsibility of of breakage, whatever, you know, so it would be operated by a group, whatever. So that's, and I guess that's still in progress that those those discussions. The thing I have always thought about, you talk about closing landfills and and starting a transfer station. To me, that's basically what our landfills are now is a transportation. Other than we're not hauling it away, but you could do that all the way, but your expense for operating a transportation is the same. You still have to have a custodian there. You still have to accept oil hazardous, you know, household hazardous waste. So your expenses are still there. What I could see is reducing the hours like in each landfill because you still need rural landfills like there's still rural areas of St. Andrews that wouldn't have, wouldn't have pickup. You know, so with that, you need the skill, the ease of of going to the landfill. So you just reduce the hours in or the days that they are that they are open. I think we go above and beyond and keeping our landfills open for the residents five days a week. So there's not a landfill that is closed like for the residents of St. Andrews. It's 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 not, you know, there's always one open. So, you know, you could keep them operating as a landfill with the custodians that are there. And then you could mine the garbage if we have to, if they do start to get full or to capacity, you know, to the near end of cell life. And then take that to a class one facility, which we have done in the past, you know, two things have happened to your waste at that time. It's it's been compacted and it's also been, it has some. You know, it's been aerated, whatever. So it's already had some composting done to it. So. So that's the thing I would like to see a a cost of rather than a transportation because you're hauling the same problem we have now when hauling the recycling. It's not compacted. You're just hauling, you know, probably under two or three tons in in a bin. Did you have a number on the increased recycling that this would, that the curbside pickup would 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 create? Which also would increase revenue with the Wares program and also enhance the environment. You know, because right now I believe there's a lot of recycling going into the landfill in the private garbage pickup that we have.
In terms of the amount of recycling that would increase from the curbside program, I don't have that data. But I do have the, you know, the waste audits that I looked at that indicated how much was going into those landfills. So I got a bit of an idea from that, I guess.
So I think St. Clement's did an audit on that and maybe D J can add to that. I think it was probably thirty to thirty five percent increase in recycling when they went from resident delivered, you know, garbage and and recycling to the curbside, to the curbside program. So if you relayed related that to cost on. Relayed related that to cost on the WERS program, you know, and and not. That amount of of product going into the landfill, it's a win-win on both situations, so. And thank you for your presentation.
You're welcome. And sorry, just to clarify, in the bottom of the report, there is examples of place of St. St. Clement's's implementation of curbside. Which shows their numbers increased over time, so I do have something in the report that that talks about it.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to touch on the the hours thing you mentioned. One of the the good purposes of getting a tracking system that doesn't require too much internet is they can also figure out the amount of people coming in at peak hours. Which would then help identify where to reduce those hours and in in a way that would be a little bit more accurate, I guess.
All right, Deputy Mayor Hoby.
Yeah, thank you. One of the things that is still an issue in in most countries and particularly in Canada with our recycling. Only about eight percent of everything that goes in recycling is actually recycled and everything else is unfortunately, that is just the reality, it's still going into our landfill. So my my, I guess, it's not really my problem, I guess my concern with that is having a separate. Bin for recycling when the reality is it's just gonna end up with the garbage anyways. And I don't know what solutions we have, because for some reason, nobody in the world has seemed to be able to figure this out. And the countries that used to take it are no longer willing to take it. So when only, you know, when ninety-two percent is hitting those landfills anyways. If there's a cost associated with the separation, I think at some point we have to weigh that out as well, right? Like, I'm quite, I I quite know when I take that blue recycling bin, that most of that stuff that I'm throwing into the recycling bin is going in the garbage. And, you know, I guess it makes me feel good that I'm trying to make a difference, but I know the reality is it's not happening. So I don't know what the thought is on that and if there's any. If you have any knowledge on how that's, you know, potentially changing, but I just. You know, to spend the money on the extra knowing, I I'm really torn on that one, like, I I don't know, I'm really torn on that one, because I just know it's all going in the garbage.
Yeah, those are very good points. I think, you know, an important thing to mention is that increasing one thing is like the effort of composting. Which would be is still a big significant portion going to the landfill. So if we can take that out, that's probably a good thirty percent, I can't remember the exact percentage of the study. But then on the flip side, now, I know you mentioned the challenges with the, you know, the recycling overall, eight percent, etc. But I think a good example would be to look at how Vancouver has their full EPR system and how that's in the potential of coming here with MMSM trying to improve that. And, you know, the the, you know, the money and the resources that goes into it is going to try and create these recycling. You know, processes to actually use the recycled material versus what you're suggesting it gets sent elsewhere and doesn't really get done. So I know it's not a perfect system, but, you know, I know that they're trying.
Any further questions? Counselor Hunt.
Colin, that, have you ever heard that eight percent number? I find that almost unbelievable that that's the number. Like, hundred percent of our recycling is bailed and goes to Minneapolis through. Prairie waste or waste or waste connections to to a Murph, which is an automated Murph. I'd like to know their their numbers of what, you know, I I I just find that hard to believe at only eight percent. And part of the problem why it was being rejected from some companies, because those companies, the companies that were sending it weren't doing a good job in separating it. You know, and 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 sending, you know, it wasn't the waste or it wasn't the recycling material that the. Other countries were think thought that they were buying, so. You know, I'd, because to me, you know, even even if it's, you know. Not recycling and and I don't think it's being landfill, it's going to. Energy systems probably in the states that are using it for incineration, which is, we'll be talking about this later. On another matter about this, so. But like I say, it's it's being used one way or another, and I don't believe it's being landfill, it's being used in 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 other areas, but. Waste connection would be the one to ask, you know, what their plant in Minneapolis does, you know, what their percentage of recycling is. Thanks.
Yeah, no, those are really good points, and I think a good example is where the sorting process falls apart. And, you know, a good example would be like a taking up a plastic container that has a plastic lid. And, you know, if you don't put the plastic lid on that container, then when it gets to the sorting area, they can't reuse it because they don't have the right lid that matches with it. So some of the issues too is, you know, where it happens from the source and how how we pre-sort it. You know, as people and where it flows into the chain, you know, that adds a bit to the element of of of, you know, why it would get rejected as well. Doesn't, it's not usable in that sense.
See, and 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 the other thing, as as of years ago, there was manual sorting stations, I think. I did the last one in in Steinbach disposed down a couple of months, a couple of months ago. You know, so they've all gone to automated optical sorting plants, which is, you know, probably ninety-five percent efficient or more. Rather than a manual sorting system, Murph, like a manual Murph, so.
Yeah, exactly.
Because if may I, if I may add here, I think one of the concerns that is is that. Is teaching the general public, you know, or the education process, I think that everybody has on their mind, you know, like we we want to do it properly. But it still doesn't happen. So I think. You know, educating the 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 public with with open houses or sending out what goes into recycling, what is not acceptable. I think this will be part of the process to make it more efficient, you know, and and to Deputy Mayor Hoby's point, instead of. You know, only eight percent getting to recycling, hopefully if we do a better job in our homes, that we can, you know. Up that number to significantly higher number and make it an efficient process. Those would be my comments. Anybody else have anything to ask, Deputy Mayor Hoby?
I think Counselor Prechen had his hand up a couple of times. But I also want to make one more, yeah, that's okay, sorry. I also want to make one more statement. I I have done a bit of research on this in the past and. I I it also, when it comes to recycling, it's on the backs of producers as well. So for instance, a quick example would be margarine containers, the types of recycling they do with the margarine containers of plastic. As far as I'm under the understanding, they can only be re-recycled. There's an infinite timeline, and when it reaches that timeline, then it has to go into the landfills, it cannot be further recycled. So the, you know, I think it's. It's not only the duty of residents, but it's also the duty of these companies that are using these. Properties to find something that's more viable. Another example would be the black plastic is not recyclable. So just things like that, so the, you know, it's kind of a two-pronged effort, we need to. Go to companies and be, you know, and and ask for more viable options and as well as a counselor point said, teaching. People what can be recycled and what can't.
Counselor Prechen, I don't see your hand up here, but you're wanting to say something?
No, actually, Kristin and Lori basically mentioned a lot of my points, great presentation. It was great when we had our subcommittees, I know Lori and I spent a lot of time at these sorting facilities and talking about garbage pickup and recycling and that. And there's a lot more that, like Kristin said, there's a lot more that these companies could be doing, and there's a lot more that the RM's municipalities, cities can be doing. And Lori touched on the incineration, I know attending FCM and looking at their plant and how they use it to. Source and fund the city by incineration is just absolutely genius, and that's something that all the provinces should be doing, so. I look forward to that conversation and thank you for coming with the presentation. It's greatly appreciated.
You're welcome.
Okay, any further questions from council or administration? Hearing, oh, Counselor Hunt?
Does Ron have anything to add to this? I see he's hidden there. He might have a comment or something that we're not thinking of, or there he is.
And listening intently, I think a lot of the, you know, when you make it easier for people to recycle. And have it in front of their house rather than, you know, driving it somewhere, I think the more convenient things are. The easier it is to get people to, you know, take better care in what what bin they're throwing things into. That's one point, you know, our public works guys do spend a lot of time, we have one. I would say we have one full-time operator driving around the three landfills. Spend about a day a week at the naughter and probably two days a week at the other two Earl Grey and Clan de Boy sites. So that does take up a lot of time. You know, at Earl Grey, we do have a place where residents can drop their, whether it's grass clippings or leaves or. Compostable things into a location. Unfortunately, at Clan de Boy, we don't have that space right now and it's thrown into the burn pile. The good news is it's not going into the landfill to turn into methane, because all organic waste that goes into the landfill. Gets buried and and aerobically decomposes and generates methane, that's why. Landfills are deemed to be the highest G greenhouse gas emitters. And it certainly is in our provinces, in our municipalities as well, so. It's getting those organics out of the landfill and turning that into compost so that it can be reused by. Agricultural, you know, farmers or or people, whether it be wood chipping or actual compost material, but. That compost has to meet a certain criteria in order to give it back to residents, so that's where that formalized program that. With all the regulations and the licensing permits to do it properly, so it does get to a certain temperature to be able to. You know, dissolve or decompose properly. Is is a big, you know, hurdle to overcome. Steinbach certainly does it well. So there's, you know, there's people out in the province that are doing it and, you know, we're we're hopefully not too far behind that.
Thank you, Ron. That's made some really good, really good points. Anything further? I don't hear and see any, so I'd like to thank you guys very much for your presentation and answering the questions. This all, this is all great, it's all helps move us further to be better stewards of the environment. So thank you very much for coming in today.
You're welcome, thanks. You guys soon, thanks.
Okay, we'll continue on with the with the agenda. We'll move on to item three point two, check detail report, resolve the council approved that August nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, check detailed report as presented. Can I have a mover, please? Move by Counselor Paul, second or? Have a second, please. Counselor Hunt, seconds, any discussion? Deputy Mayor Hoby.
Yeah, hi, sorry, Tim sent me some questions about an hour, I mean, some answers to my questions about an hour and a half ago. So I thank you, Tim, for that. They were good. I do have some ongoing questions about a couple of these, so I can ask you off. After this meeting, if that is the case, I just don't know. I'm so confused now about this, whether I abstain or I object, don't know what to do. Because I'm not comfortable approving it until I know a couple more things about one of the answers. So somebody tell me what to do, because I'm so confused when it comes to this.
Okay, if you if you're not gonna ask any questions, you can you can tell us that you're going to abstain from the vote, but then you can't participate in the discussion either. And if you're satisfied that you're gonna get the answers, you you can you can abstain.
Okay, thank you.
And Madam Mayor?
I will abstain. Thank you.
Okay, any anything further? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor?
I.
That is that is carried with two abstentions. Bylaw number four three seven six, reduce speeds on bylaw second reading. Resolve that council give second reading to bylaw number four three seven six, being a bylaw to reduce speeds in school zones as presented, can I have a mover, please? Move by Counselor Paul, second or? Counselor Garvey, seconds, any discussion?
Yes, I just realized I forgot to email Colleen, there's no bylaw attached to for us to review. What is the speed limit currently on St. Andrews Road? Is it thirty?
Counselor Paul?
Yes, I think it's thirty. It changes from fifty to thirty.
It changes from fifty to thirty by the schools?
Yes.
Okay, well, this bylaw, it's on here, but I believe we're going to the summer hours. It will change, well, I have real concern because we can state. You know, different times for each school, Lockport or the St. Andrews Road one, if it's thirty, then you're gonna up it to fifty. When we have the daycare and that I believe is the most used playground, I have concerns, that one, that just that school. Is going to be. Put up to fifty, because it is such a narrow road and that should really be a concern for safety issue. So those are my comments, I agree, we need to do this and update it, but just that school, I have a concern of.
Colleen?
I just want to point out that the bylaw is attached to three point four, second reading.
No, when I click on it, all I get is the resolution. There's no, the like, the whole bylaw is not attached to it. I'm sorry, pardon? Oh, you just put it on, okay, thank you.
You're welcome. No, it was there the whole time.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Counselor Paul?
Thank you. Yeah, I've got access to the bylaw as well on my agenda, which is great, thank you very much. I I disagree with the comment of reducing it down to try to keep it at thirty, because there's a daycare there. We have a multitude of daycares inside of the municipality, and I'm pretty sure all the remainder remainder of the daycares. Are on roads that are fifty kilometers an hour, I know I got one on my road. And there never seems to be a problem with those situations, so that's just my comment.
Thank you, Counselor Paul. Any further discussion?
That's my concern, because the other roads aren't as narrow as St. Andrews Road.
Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, or counsel before, Counselor Hunt, you got your hand up, or were you voting?
Both, I'll vote, I just want to ask a comment, does this make it a difference because it's a highways road, like the St. Andrews Road is highways, is a provincial road? Does that have any different bearing on our on our bylaw or what we can do legally on a highways road?
Colleen?
No, we are allowed to establish the speed, the only difference between a highways road and a municipal road. Is MI highways will look after posting the signs, they will purchase and install them, so that's the difference.
Any further questions? Madam Mayor?
Yes, thanks for that, Colleen. So then if we pass, is there's a chance they could relook at just that provincial road one, or no?
No, no, I'm sorry, they only look after purchasing and installing the sign.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any more discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor?
I.
That is carried. Okay. Bylaw number four three seven six, third reading, resolve that council give third reading to bylaw number four three seven six. Being a bylaw to reduce speeds in school zones as presented, can I have a mover, please? Move by Counselor Paul, second or? Counselor Garvey, seconds, any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor? Okay, on our agenda, it has item three point five, but we are going to leave that until we get further information, so we'll skip that. Move to item three point six, RFD security cameras. Resolve that council approve the purchase of security camera of a security camera system. From the Green Connects Electric Corporation, John Sherlock, at a cost of thirty-two thousand five hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Which will be funded from the General Reserve Fund, can I have a mover, please? Move by Counselor Paul, second or? Have a second, please. Counselor Hunt, seconds, any discussion? Madam Mayor? Madam mayor.
Thank you. Um not having knowledge on this whole system, um. Councillor Pritchard, you have the expertise on this. Um I just saw a brief uh response by email. Do you have any more comments add that this is a a good system?
Councillor Pritchard.
Yeah, the the quality of the camera is good. Uh we've done about thirty-eight or thirty-nine installs of that product. There's a newer product that uh last six months to a year, everybody's been jumping to called Univision. Um but the cameras are good. Uh my only concern or issue was just nailing down the cost and making sure it's the best deal for the RM. But the quality of camera and uh the functions, uh warranty features, uh all capabilities, it's fantastic.
Thank you, councillor Pritchard. Any further discussion, madam mayor?
Yes, so with that councillor Pritchard, is that a a a fair cost that we that we were provided with?
I don't know. I have been in the hospital for a couple of days having a baby, so I can't tell you, but I could price it out quickly, but. Uh you know, if council can give me a couple of days, I could check it, but that's, you know, it's up to the group. It doesn't matter like uh I'm sure there's um. Yeah, I don't know. I don't know, guys. I don't, I haven't reviewed the whole thing, so I don't really want to comment on that. I don't know.
Uh deputy mayor Hobie.
Hi, yeah, I I I'm kind of similar to it. Um Marcell said I I'm I don't have enough expertise in this to, you know. Say I'm comfortable and not comfortable. I did notice a couple of back and forth emails. There was some some conversation about pricing and maybe we could go back and fine tune it. So I'm not sure where that's at, but the one thing that did stand out to me, and I know we could probably do better. Is the the prices of the um the monitors seemed a little high to me. Um so, you know, I I know it was kind of looked like it had been recorded. It still seemed a little high, but. That's the only thing I can really comment on. The other, I just, I don't, I don't have any expertise in it and um. But that was just the the only thing that kind of stood out to me, so thank you.
Any further discussion, councillor Hunt?
I believe the the department put out tenders for it and this is what we received back. Uh I don't know, like five or six people were asked to quote on it. Um I like, I like the idea that there's three. Uh DVRs or uh that monitor, so uh have a problem with uh one, you still have. Two more as backup, so the cameras will be pointing, you know, will overlap each other. Um I'm okay moving forward on it. When are we gonna do it? When we lose something else or something else gets stolen, so. Um we've done our due diligence, our staff has done their due diligence, so I'm okay moving moving forward.
Thank you, councillor Hunt. Any further discussion, councillor Paul?
Uh yeah, no, I uh I like the system. I think we definitely need to do something, you know, having equipment going missing and and having problems like that is. It's definitely not a good thing. Um I I'm gonna trust our administration that they they've done everything that they they could to get our price down for us. And uh we're gonna go from there, so I don't need anything else to move forward. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anything further? I'll call a question, all those, oh, madam mayor.
Yes, thank you. Well, my only concern is, um I know we need this. We definitely need because the large amounts of theft. Um it's just disappointing that we didn't, we couldn't get all of our questions answered. And I assume we're not gonna table this at this point to get. Other quotes? Well, I know Colleen had had her hand up uh uh a while ago. Do you have something else to add?
Not for the security cameras, other than we did put it out for tender, the post of receipt, this is the recommendation of administration. Um yeah, that's pretty much it.
Okay, we've had a, we've we've had an RFP put out for cameras and uh. And the security system, uh we've discussed it. I believe for me, I have enough information. I think some some accounts, the rest of the council. Does some doesn't, uh but we're going to move ahead. If we feel that this is uh that we don't have enough information, the uh the resolution can be defeated. So at this time, I'll call a question. All those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Thank you. Okay, item three point seven, mitigation and preparedness program. Be it resolved that council supports the submission of the proposal under Manitoba, under Manitoba government's mitigation and preparedness program. To be placed into a reserve fund for future disaster mitigation projects. Which could include protecting the shoreline properties along Lake Winnipeg and authorize it's the CAO to submit the proposal. Can I have a mover please? By councillor Hunt, second by councillor Paul, uh discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all was, oh, madam mayor.
Thank you. I know never any emails, but they're on this. Um. Will, is it expected, this is for administration, is it expected we're going to be submitting? Um more of the claims. I fully understand what's going on, DJ. Thank you for all of this, but. Is it expected we will be filling in more claims to this?
Yes.
And the deadline is September twenty-third.
And. The deadline for the mitigation program, not the DFA claims.
Oh, so what is the deadline for DFA? Does it go by year or like?
I'm not sure. Honestly, I've had years where it's been years, you know, before you finally got all the DFA uh. Monies in, you know, like you you make the applications, you book them as receivables, they get reviewed by the government, there's some back and forth. Um you know, so so it's it's a bit of a process, you know, so. Uh it's something we don't really control much, except to put in the best applications we can and then to defend them should they get rejected, you know, so. Um I understand if I'm talking to the consultant last night, uh they they are still entering some um other projects into their system, but. He couldn't confirm that a hundred percent, so he was looking into that, but he, I don't have that information yet, but I believe we're still gonna be claiming more money as well.
Oh, okay, thank you. Totally clear now. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor? That is carried. Thank you very much. That brings us to the end of our agenda, so.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. Did you read the resolution? I don't think you read the resolution.
Yes.
Yeah, I did.
Yeah.
It was moved by councillor Hunt and second by councillor Paul.
Yeah, but I know, I think you called the vote, but you didn't read the resolution.
No, I read, I read the resolution.
Yeah.
Um was second, it was moved by councillor Hunt and second by councillor Paul.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Item four, resolve that special council meeting be adjourned at one or two PM. Can I have a mover please? Councillor Paul moves, councillor Hunt seconds, all in favor, all in favor.
Oh, hang on, sorry. So com- so DJ, are we gonna discuss anymore on what the claim is like the? What I sent the email out on discussion? Um you know, about the letters that we had sent and received back from the province. Will this have any any bearing on that letter? Because we have to. Send a letter to the province, right?
Um we have to send in this application certainly um for the mitigation program um. Um but we did receive that letter back from the minister's office uh saying that the mitigation efforts were uh for ours to take and. And then I understand that the MLA had contacted you after and then did a tour with the area and and recommended we send a more specific letter. You know, so we're getting more specific costs on uh I'm looking at, so you know, um small areas of shoreline uh. Alignment or shoreline protection, um restoration in some areas where it's starting to fail. Not a lot of areas, but we're getting some prices on that and possibly raising Charlie Beach Road again. Uh you know, so we're looking at that and I think once we get those numbers, we should write a letter um to the province saying specifically. What we're looking at and our mitigation fund might be seventy thousand dollars or maybe ninety thousand dollars. And if those prices exceed that, we might wanna. Ask for assistance on that, on that regard. I was thinking of something in that direction. Okay, councillor Hunt?
Yeah, so like we sent the letter off to um. You know, the province on July fifteenth and then we received the reply back on August the tenth and um. Like anything, it's a no, you know, they had some good information in there uh and some inaccurate information, I believe. Um you know, the MOU was signed obviously back in oh five and oh six. Um but I don't believe we were ever asked for money and I spoke with. People that were around in oh five and oh six from Village of Dunodder and Springfield and uh there was no money expected from those RMs. Um not only does it help the shoreline erosion protection or the water coming over the shoreline that would have happened in oh five and oh six. Or oh or oh five, but it protects the back areas uh from flooding and damage as well. Yeah, so like with these new normals, like you say, we're at a real time crunch here, because this is about when it started in oh five, when the mayors of uh. Gimli, uh Village of Dunodder, Saint Andrews, Saint Clements, um Alexander, uh Victoria Beach, all them ones got together with the South Basin. And lobbied the province and that's when the program started, which we were lucky to get um funding and and and. Flood protection around Netley, uh Netley Creek area as well as uh river as Breezy Point. Um so like I say, I think it's important that we send this letter back. Um um. Minister Lajmody reached out to me on Wednesday uh from his office and asked for a tour of the area, uh which was a response from the letter. Um um we met with a resident down there and on the way home, uh I had called DJ. With Mr. Lajmody in the in the truck to see what we exactly needed, so that where the letter was recommended come from us. Uh with some numbers, um because like I say, we don't have time on on this one. It's not like a DFA claim. That can be fixed up after this. This is gonna be a serious problem as it was in oh five. Um so moving forward with it uh to protect this and and is is gonna be paramount, so. Hopefully, the province will pick up the ball and do something with it.
Your microphone's off, John. Go ahead, madam mayor. These are, these are non, these are, there's, we're, we're at the end of our agenda, so if there's anything to add. We should have it earlier, but uh make it quick and we, so we can adjourn. Thank you.
I want to thank councillor Hunt for remembering to bring this up. You were around at the time, so basically the letter we received back from. Uh the province to our letter requesting funding. The Armistice in Andrew signed an MOU May thirtieth, two thousand and six, however, a final agreement was never concluded. And the municipal contributions toward the project were not received. In spite of the lack of this final agreement, Manitoba brought in funding and technical expertise to assist the local authorities. To make the Lake Winnipeg dykes permanent. And then there was a steering committee and everything. Um now they're not recognizing these temporary dykes as um provincial assets. So did Minister Lajmody say that they're going to provide any? Type of funding towards this? Well, because this letter says no.
Well, this letter says no from a department, um but I think this letter got out before it went across the minister's desk, I believe. And um but in saying that, that that this MOU was signed in oh six, uh the province come back to the RM in in um. In um two thousand and thirteen, twelve and thirteen, when we had high water on around the creek. And the Red and the Red River, and they had another decking program that they were going to do. And then that's where the raising of some homes come into into play. Probably twenty homes around Netley Creek area were raised um with a fourteen percent deductible from the province, so. You know, and saying they're not provincial assets is true. They wanted the RM to take responsibility of them and we said no at the time, because it protects. Um the residents from from flooding from, you know, maybe an artificially created High Lake Winnipeg. But regardless of that, the province has continued to do flood mitigation. And even in two thousand and ten, they raised Shally Beach Road again. Um so if there was any problem with money being owed to them, they wouldn't have been taking responsibility or taking an onus and and protecting these people. More, so all we're doing is asking them to continue the the um fight of the high water, I guess, and to and to. Move on. So I guess, like I say, this letter is from, you see who the letters, letter is from.
Um yes.
And and it went to the ministers and that's what precipitated the call from Minister Lajmody um to look at the area. So he has this, you know, we have his support on it and that's why he recommends sending a letter uh with some minor, not minor, but some. Uh dollar amounts which which we can acquire by per meter. Um uh erosion control on Lake Winnipeg and the raising of the road in Shelly Beach, which is part of a levy or part of a dyke. So. Hopefully, when it goes across that department and then they go to go to treasury or whatever they have to do, so. But like I say, time is of the essence here, so we can't afford to wait.
So thank you. So then I support um administration to uh forward uh another letter as soon as possible. Is that your suggestion?
Yes.
Thank you.
Councillor Paul?
Yeah, although I can appreciate all this information and it's an important topic, um administration has already said they're sending a letter and they're getting more information. I have no idea why we continue talking about this. Like we're, we've spent fifteen minutes here talking about this stuff when. Administration has already identified they're doing that and then we're just reiterating that we're doing that. So I think it's just non-value added to the meeting at this point in time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that, councillor Paul. And with that, I will uh ask for a resolution to adjourn. Resolve that council meeting be adjourned uh till one ten PM. Come a mover, councillor Garvey moves, councillor.
Actually, I had, I had a quick comment before we adjourn, if that's all right. I just wanted to follow up. I know, but I wanted to follow up on uh. The suggestion that Mayor Soul made at the beginning of this meeting that we may not. Charge for our time today, and I'm just wondering if that's in contravention to our indemnity bylaw.
Okay, let's uh let's let's leave, let's leave that alone. Council meeting be adjourned at one ten PM. Can I have a mover? Councillor Paul moves, councillor Garvey seconds, all in favor? That is carried. Thank you very much. Have a great rest of your day.